Ever, you're ready?
Sure, um, yeah, we can call the meeting to order. I'm sorry, honestly, I will say right now that I'm still trying to gather myself. I had such an emotional reaction to this verdict that. Okay, so, um, we can go ahead and call the meeting.
Okay, I'll do the roll call. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Present, uh, from Ypsilanti in Washington County.
Mayor Proton Brown.
President from Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Somerville.
President, Ypsilanti, Washington County, Michigan.
Mayor Richardson. Councilmember Morgan. Councilmember Simmons.
Present, uh, attending virtually from the city of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Present, city of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Council, the next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Can I move to excuse, uh, Councilmember Morgan and, uh, Mayor?
The support?
Support.
We can do a voice vote on that, right? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I saw your thumbs up, Dennis.
Okay, now, the, the next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Or some of, sorry.
Is there support?
Support.
Are there any, um, changes or anything that needs to be, uh, added to the agenda? All right, seeing none. On favor, uh, to approve the agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 Council, the next item on the agenda is to adjourn to session.
I move to adjourn to closed session?
Support.
All right, it's been moved to seconded.
This is a roll call vote. Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Five yes votes and two absent, the motion carries. We are adjourned to close session at six oh six. All right, we're all set.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion for us to reconvene.
So moved for seven o'clock?
Support.
Do a voice vote on that, Andrew?
Um, yeah, those, a voice, excuse me, a voice vote to reconvene and then as Chair of the meeting, you can just recess until seven o'clock.
All perfect, all in favor of reconvening, please say aye.
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 Me opposed, aye. What?
No, aye, aye, aye.
Okay, um, all right, and then, all right, we will recess until seven PM, so I'll see you all in twenty-nine minutes.
Sounds good.
Perfect, thank you.
So if you'd like to, uh, uh, call the meeting back to order after the recess.
Okay, yes, the meeting's called to order.
Okay, council, the next item on the agenda, um, is public comments. Uh, we currently have three members of the, uh, public in, in attendees list. If anyone would like to make comment, please raise their hand and, uh, you'll have three minutes to address council. Brian Foley has raised their hand, allow them to speak now.
Good evening, I don't know if you can hear me because I'm kind of in a noisy environment, somebody can just raise their head, see if they can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, thanks Steve, I see your head now. My name is Brian Foley, four twenty-five, Amesworth Circle. Lifelong resident, um, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council, city manager, staff, um, I'm here this evening, um, I actually missed the last city council meeting. Because I didn't know that it started at six, but I'm here tonight, so if I have, my information is not correct, um, I apologize in, in advance. But I'm calling about the incident, the most recent incident that took place at the Sitco gas station on the corner of Spring and Huron Street. And I'm here as, insane as this may sound, demanding that the city of Ypsilanti, demanding that the city of Ypsilanti declare that place of business a public nuisance. I don't know how long or how many people's lives has to be lost there, be something is, before something is done. That place allows illegal activity to go on their property all times of day and times of night. I know, I live there, I see what I see, and I know what's going on. The reason why I said, I don't know if I had my information incorrect or correct, but I was, was told is that the city of Ypsilanti is looking to see what they can do about that property legally to make sure that that is a safe environment for all people coming to do business there. Well, I found that ironic because when a homicide took place approximately two years ago at Tom Party Store, the city of Ypsilanti didn't have to find out what they needed to have done. The very next day, a raid was conducted, and the following day, that building was shut down because of building violations and code violations. I know because I was called in as electrical contractor to help them meet and come into compliance with the electrical problem that they had. So when I heard that the city of Ypsilanti has to try to see what they can do, well, seems like we don't have a problem looking to see what can be done when it becomes north of Michigan Avenue, but when it comes incidents on south side of, of Michigan Avenue, all of something, we have to see what we can do. And that's why I'm here right now, demanding that the city of Ypsilanti declare that place a public nuisance before somebody else is injured or another loss of life is happened. I know that they can be asked by the city of Ypsilanti to put cameras in there as well as lights. Thank you for your time, I'll see you at next meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Thank you.
It doesn't appear that anyone else has their hand raised, um, in the attendees list, but if you would like to make comment, please raise your hand and, uh, we'll allow you to speak. I'm seeing no hands raised, council, if it, if it's all right, we can move on to the next, uh, section. And the, uh, the next section is presenting.
Andrew, before, and we, before we do that, I'd like to, um, comment on Mr. Foley's, um, comments. Mr. Foley, hear you loud and clear and could not agree with you more, and I'm asking that, I do know that at, um, some point that, uh, the chief Degusti had said that there were some extra patrols of police going through there periodically. However, uh, I would like to see what we can do, uh, or what we need to do to declare that place a nuisance. Um, there is constant, if you go through there, you can see the drug deals that are being made, it's, it's, it's very obvious. You can see, um, unsavory, uh, activity going on at any time of day or night, if you go past there. We have lost some very good, um, residents from, in the city of Ypsilanti because they lived near there and they have moved completely out of the city. And these were people that were born and raised and loves, uh, the city of Ypsilanti. And so, uh, something must be done, so I'm asking city manager and the police chief, whatever it takes to do, make a change there. Um, let's, let's do it, people are getting stabbed there, they're getting killed there, and it comes to a point where enough is enough. So, thank you, city manager and police chief Degusti, thank you, all right. Mr. Hulanga, go on please with the agenda.
Council, the next item is, uh, presentation, there is one proclamation, a proclamation for workers Memorial Day. Whereas it is appropriate to honor the courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's labor force and frontline responders who have been injured or disabled or have died as a result of workplace accidents, negligence, lack of adequate protections. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti looks to pay tribute to the contributions workers have made to the strength, prosperity, and well-being of our city. And whereas every year on April twenty-eighth, the city of Ypsilanti joins with workers and communities around the world in recognizing workers Memorial Day to honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job. And whereas according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, there were five thousand three hundred and thirty-three workers, worker fatalities from work-related incidences in the USA in twenty nineteen with one hundred and sixty-five of those in Michigan. And among Michigan private industry employers have over eighty-six thousand injuries and illnesses were reported by workers in twenty nineteen. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic in particular has made paramount the failings of workplace safety standards and inadequate protections for workers on the job and the importance placed on public health and workplace safety. And whereas frontline workers in particular have again put their lives on the line to save our lives, provide us with essential services, and keep us safe. And therefore be it resolved by the city of Ypsilanti, the members of city, city council honor workers and officially designate April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one as workers Memorial Day. We offer this expression of heartfelt appreciation of the American worker. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the city of Ypsilanti shall designate by this proclamation, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one as a celebration of the importance of workers in the city of Ypsilanti.
Is there a motion? Oh, that was a proclamation, not a res- okay, thank you, I was thinking was the resolution, thank you for reading that.
Okay, council, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven six, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven seven, approving the minutes of April sixth and thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven eight, approving appointments to boards and commissions. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven nine, accepting the city manager evaluation.
I'll move.
Support, it's been moved and supported. Mr. Hulanga, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Six yes votes and one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's moving on to the next section, resolution motions and discussions. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight zero, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city owns a freight house plaza located adjacent to the Ypsilanti Freight House one hundred marketplace. And whereas Growing Hope has operated a farmer's market in the plaza since twenty thirteen and has expressed interest in cooperating with the city to establish a long-term plan to continue the market. And whereas the city is interested in cooperating with Growing Hope, I'll therefore be it resolved that the city enter the attached memorandum of understanding with Growing Hope for use of the freight house plaza for Saturday farmer mark, farmer markets.
Some of.
Sir's second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Roll call, please.
Is there any discussion of this, or?
Mr. Wilcoxen?
I just had one question, and there's a, there's a note in the memo that says that, uh, the vendors fees don't cover the costs. And I'm wondering where that extra funding comes from to, uh, support the market.
Well, I'm here as a staff member who's worked on the MOU with Growing Hope and Dana Popke is with us. I would defer her on that question, um, and ask that we promote her for that part of the discussion.
Thank you.
Hi, hello, uh, I'm Dana Popke, I'm the farmer, I'm the farmers market manager, thanks for having me here tonight. Um, as far as funding for the farmers markets, uh, we do intentionally keep our vendor fees low so that there's a low barrier of entry for our small businesses to enter the market. The funding for, you know, my salary, Growing Hope's overhead, the rest of the market staff comes from individual donors, comes from sponsorships, comes from uh, grants from all kinds of organizations, so, um, Growing Hope as a whole does, does the fundraising for, uh, the market along with our other programs.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any other questions about the market, if anyone has any.
Thanks Dana.
Thank you.
I didn't see any other hands for questions. Any other, do we need to hear anything else from Mr. Jacobs? All right, if not, seeing no hands and hearing nothing, uh, Mr. Lang, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes, one absence.
Thank you.
Council, moving on, the next resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight one, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas Ypsilanti City Council approved a public act one four eight of two thousand obsolete property rehabilitation act abatement for property improvements at fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six East Cross in twenty thirteen. And whereas the owners of the fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six East Cross had until December twenty nineteen to complete the project. And whereas the owners of fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six East Cross have requested the city revoke the Oprah due to not being able to complete the project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council revoked the previous twenty thirteen Oprah tax exemption for fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six East Cross due to the lack of construction in the timeframe previously allotted.
Some of.
Support.
It's been moved in second. Discussion.
Got a question.
Yes, Mr. Jones Chance.
Uh, yeah, um, Joe has, so the, um, the abatement has already begun, right?
I know.
Okay, because I, go ahead.
There's a, a very small portion of, of the tax, uh, um, of the taxes that have been abandoned, we're talking hundreds of dollars at this point, uh, based on the fact that no work was done on the property. And so, and, and realistically, she did receive a tiny bit of an incentive, but, um, but for the most part, the, the Oprah was never realized.
Okay, and then, um, you know, I'm having trouble, I was looking, um, I was looking through the, uh, property records. And, um, I couldn't tell whether fifty-two, fifty-four, and fifty-six were personal property as in they were part of forty-eight, or if they're a separate parcels, what's?
So, so this one was a weird one, uh, this all happened prior to, to me joining the city, but the top two floors of that building were deemed obsolete, the bottom floor was not. And so what happened is the, the bottom floor and the, and the property were split off, um, from the top floor per, for the, um, for the sake of the abatement, and so there's four different parcels that, that are part of this, one which never collected anything because there wasn't ever any, any taxable value to, to, to collect on. Uh, one of which was, he, was the value of the top two floors of the building, and the other was the ground floor and land value of the building. And so if you're looking at the land records, it would be a lot easier for me to, to share them with you, uh, just because there are multiple pieces to it, and it's probably the most confusing Oprah that the city's ever done.
Because I don't see an assessed value for the other, the three that we're talking about.
Yeah, and, and those are all, there's, there's two, um, Act eighty-eight parcels, as it's like, instead of eleven eleven, which almost every parcel in the city has their eleven eighty-eight. Then there's also the eleven ninety-nine, uh, which I'm getting way too kind of in the weeds there, but I'll be more than happy to share you, with you all of the records because it does get very confusing when you do create these taxes and the parcels.
Yeah, my, my main concern was just to know how much incentive had been received, it's, it's actually more of a concern for the next one than this one.
Yeah, I would say with this one, we're talking very, very little, um, if any, it basically was the, um, the, well, we ended up freezing the top two levels value, so they would typically go up two percent a year, so we're talking two percent a year for like four year, five years. Um, not much, uh, so realistically, it's, it's a very, very small slice of the incentive that, that, that was received. Uh, we can go over the next one, uh, in, in a minute, but, um, there's, it's definitely a very, yes, um, I can share with you all of the records. It's, it's, it's complicated to, to explain, it's much easier to show.
All right, I think that answers my question, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen?
So, the, the incentive that is realized, I, yeah, I realize you're saying this is very small, but, you know, this, in terms of policy, it shouldn't matter how, how big that is, and so what happens with, if, if that incentive was, was realized by the owner, do they owe that back because they've never done anything with the property?
So, the incentive would have never been realized if they didn't do anything, if they would have actually done the work, then they would have realized the incentive and we wouldn't be here. But what the city did prior to the community benefits ordinance was put timelines on construction. Basically, you gotta complete this in two, three, four, five years. Um, and so the reason why we didn't, didn't, uh, revoke them is because in, in the middle of COVID, everything kind of got put on pause. And that's why we're bringing them now, uh, but, um, the tax incentive is never realized until you complete the project. Uh, and, and it's the year after you complete the project, so i- in reality, if, if the owner of fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six actually wanted to renovate the, the structures, pretty much the Oprah would be gone before we act, they actually would start receiving the incentive, and the incentive is, is just lesser taxes for the city, uh, but, uh, in talking to them, the project isn't feasible based on cost to, to rehab those spaces. And so, um, they have kindly requested to, to revoke, or to, to request the city revoke it.
So those things are just gonna sit there, and they're not being used for anything, they're, they can't, they're not up to code, so they can't be used for anything.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing up there, there hasn't been anything up there in eighty years, which makes it really challenging.
Eighty years?
I think so, yeah.
Were you done, Steve?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, uh, Joe, I have a question, um, the second building from the, the corner, you know, their main, they were all in the first, and, and the corner lot, corner building, and then they spread over into the second building, now they have an upstairs, um, dining room up there.
And that's the third building, but yeah.
That's the third building?
Yeah.
Or there, there's one on the other side of that.
So, so there's the, there's, there's the sidetrack side and then the Frenchie's side.
Right.
Bird brain side, the bird.
What was the last one?
Bird brain.
Oh, okay.
And then upstairs, a bird brain is actually an office. Um, so, that was two offices, so that was never part of, of the Oprah, it was only fifty-two and fifty-four, but we've still been called the, the, the three, the three addresses.
Okay. So, where did they, okay, the, the second floor of Frenchie's was not always done, they did do some work there, so that was not under the Oprah?
No, so above sidetrack and Frenchie's, the top, those two floors were, were never anything. I mean, probably back in the late nineteen hundreds, early twentieth century, it was something, but, and, and if you go up the pictures, it's, it's, it's nothing. Um, so our goal was to get that to be activated, a residential, but when the price came in with the elevator and the needed repairs, it, it didn't make financial sense.
So would that be the third floor of Frenchie's, because the second floor, they have a dining room up there?
No, not above Frenchie's, it's above, we're right, sorry.
Where?
It's above bird brain.
Oh, you're thinking of like the loft above the back room in the third, in the third building, Lois?
As an.
No, if you walk through, okay, I guess maybe it.
It's a loft, it goes, it's above the back dining room in the third building, so it used to be called Bird Brain, and that's why it, it's like, everybody calls it Bird Brain because the prior business used to be Bird Brain.
Right.
So it's the third building, it's the main floor, but there's a loft, so, and then there's two stories above that, that are o- offices.
Okay, no, where I'm talking about, there is a dining room, uh, city manager and I, we had meeting down at the par, uh, uh, park and, uh, with, uh, Rep Peterson, and we, uh, ended up having lunch there.
Yeah, so the loft.
That's the loft that you're speaking.
It's the loft in the Bird Brain room.
Okay.
So it's the third, it's the third building.
So then there is another floor above that.
There's two floors above that.
Two, there's two floors above the loft, so that building's actually four stories?
No, so the, the, the like loft is in the ma- on the main, like, story. There's a basement below, and then there's two stories above the room that has the loft. So the loft isn't considered a separate floor, it's part of the main.
Okay, I got you, okay, all right, thank you, I was just trying to get it all pictured, you know.
It's confusing, there's lots of layers.
I see, okay. All right, that answered my question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, but it's one absence.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight two, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas Ypsilanti City Council approved a public act one four eight of two thousand obsolete property rehabilitation act abatement for property improvements at six and twelve South Washington in twenty fourteen. And whereas the owners of six and twelve South Washington had until December eighteen to complete the project. And whereas the owners of six and twelve South Washington are in active violation with the historic district commission, I'll therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council revoked the previous twenty fourteen Oprah tax exemption for six and twelve South Washington due to the lack of construction, uh, in timeframe previously allotted.
The move.
Part. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Um, any discussion, anything you wanted to share on this one, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, uh, well, well, the one thing made it, I just did a quick check, and, uh, with, with the, the ground floor, uh, the tax incentive received was, was roughly the same as sidetrack, so virtually nothing, uh, they never actually collected any, any incentive on the, on what's called the rehab parcel, and so both of these never started collecting, um, and so, uh, that's it, then, this, uh, this, uh, property owner has requested an extension, um, I did send an email this, this afternoon. They did not say how long, they have about four years left, um, and we've been working with this property owner for the past four years trying to get them to, to start the project and, and they. Four years trying to get them to to start the project and and they. They have done uh the bare minimum work, but they haven't pulled a building permit since twenty seventeen. So I know that that and they.
And they still have four years left?
Yes, well, they have four years left to receive the incentive that they haven't received. Uh, but they have, they've been expired uh to, you know, from for 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 two years now. Um, uh, to to actually complete the the project. I know they indicated that COVID was the main reason, but this expired prior to COVID and so. Um, they they've made, the only time they tell us they're going to make an attempt is when we tell them we have to go to council. Um, and so.
So can they reapply?
Jones Chance.
Sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it the. It's the, it's the, it's the request for extension for me, like I I I don't get it. You know, the the tax incentive, it's meant to encourage. Projects that revitalize and rehabilitate structures that but for the it's incentive would not be feasible. You know, it's it's a, it's it's a promise from the developer that the work's gonna be done during a given time. And then a promise from the citizens of the city. Um, that in exchange for the work, you know, we're gonna forego some of the tax benefits that we might have otherwise been entitled to. And you know, it's a promise with a finite life and it's not a blank check for. An unkept promise or some inability to perform. Like, I don't understand. You know, you don't have a right to. Tax revenue. You just, you don't, like. The city needs this money to for other services if you're not gonna do what you said you're gonna do. I I don't, it's it's very ballsy.
Mr. Wilcoxen?
I was just curious if they could, they could reapply for this at some point. That would have to come back to coun- council and.
It would, it would cop all under, oh, depending on the cost of the incentive. Uh, they would have to, they would have to comply with the community benefits ordinance. Which state was not in place when they, when they applied. Um, I think that the chance of the forty-three, fifty-two, four and six coming back. Would be much, much more feasible than this one because this one is such a small project. This was basically us trying to incentivize the redevelopment of this parcel to get it back into and and the working age. And while they did some of the work, they never received any of the benefit and then and then uh um because they never completed the project. And and now, I mean, we've seen Oprah's actually do beautiful things in this city. Uh, I I can think of, i- if you haven't been to Bellflower, that is a shiny example of what you can do. Uh, with an Oprah Thompson block. I know it's an open yet, but but they have done fantastic work. Um, really, the 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 two mower buildings where where Bobcat Bonney's is and where Spark is. Amazing build where where Christopher lives, actually.
What about Dela?
Where does Christopher live?
Christopher lives in downtown, um, near the Rocket.
Okay.
And so. Oh, you can see where the Oprah's have been so beneficial. Uh, but this, this, this particular property had issues where they promised the HTC a lot of things. Uh, and then they never delivered. We keep asking them to reply and they don't. Um, and now we're, we're, we're taking it to the next level. Uh, in enforcement because they refused to to actually do anything because the, the awning they put out was not appropriate. Um, and then because they have an inappropriate awning, they have to fix the awning before they can get a sign. So they tell everyone the city won't let them have a sign. Um, there's just a lot of issues. Um, I know they'd like to have an extension, but that's why, and and I requested it the last time, and I fully supported all of the extensions that Oprah last time. But this time I think it's gone far too long. Um, and I know we're in the middle of a pandemic, but all of these issues were there far before the pandemic.
Any other question? Oh, go ahead.
I guess, sorry, I I just went on a little bit of a rant, but uh, see, he could. Uh, they they could, they could apply for an extension. I don't know if we would give um at this point because the building's not in the same shape as it was. Um, but there is always that chance that they could reapply and then council would have to do that. Uh, I would have to make that determination.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Question. Okay, seeing none, uh, Mr. Hulenga, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absence.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next section of the agenda, board and commissions nominations. Uh, there are two nominations for reappointment to the planning commission uh for Michael Simmons and Jessica Donley. Uh, there is a new appointment to the Human Relations Commission's Ivan Abadu. Uh, there is a reappointment to the ZBA, Georgina Hickey. And and a uh reappointment to the Sustainability Commission, Julia Behe. Uh, the next section of the agenda is board and commission liaison reports.
Okay, I'll start with you, Mr. Wilcoxen. You're muted.
Sorry, I was trying to get back to my notes here. Uh, Rutherford Pool is is trying desperately to get the things in order so that they can open at the end of May, beginning of June. Um, they've been looking at the costs associated with that, running a couple of different numbers for that. Um, set the numbers and and looking at uh health issues in terms of spacing, what that, how that impacts. You know, classes, uh, things like that. Uh, certainly classes with little people are are different than classes for 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 bigger people. But looking at how to um. To do the spacing and in order to do that, they're gonna have to have somebody uh full-time to basically police. Uh, compliance with that. And so in terms of intake and having people out in front to. Uh, check to make sure that, uh, you know, nobody's sick and nobody's going sick and um. Then, you know, making sure that people have masks on appropriately inside, and this can't be done by the lifeguards that are there. And so they're looking at internships to to fill those positions, to have somebody to do that. Um. You know, any way you look at it, I think uh this is gonna be a loss. Um, and their fundraising is is trying to compensate for that. Um, they they certainly wouldn't make the uh. You know, the money they would make on a, on a full season um with full programming, so um, but they wanna. Make it available so that um interest isn't lost over time. So going closing for another year. You know, would make it more difficult in the in the coming years as well, so. Um, but they're, they're moving along with that and and uh. That's pretty much where it stands. It's it, you know, we'll have to see how as it that time gets closer, whether that'll come to fruition or not.
I have a question. Is it with. Cases still skyrocketing here in Michigan? Uh, and even in this area, are we, is it really gonna be safe to? Open the pool to have people, you know, even distance, but. In the pool itself, I mean, I'm I'm just trying to um kind of picture all that.
Right, and and so are they. And and coming up with the, you know, the capacity for that pool is is actually really high. And it it never comes to that. And so I think the capacity is like three hundred and some people, almost four hundred people. And they're like, you know, if you're, if you're operating at at fifty percent capacity or twenty-five percent capacity. Those numbers don't make any sense anyway because um. You know, but they're taking all that into account and and it may come, I mean, there's no. They're working towards that goal, but there's nothing to say that that's actually what's gonna happen. Because, you know, if we get another lockdown or something like that, then clearly that's changed. But other um. The health department has has allowed indoor pools to open, so they're kind of going on that. Um, and that's, that's what they're basing that on. But clearly, you know, everybody is very conscious and and aware that uh. This this can change, uh, you know, very quickly, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilcoxen? Comments? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, so th- this is like city boards and commissions liaison reports. There is still the standard liaison reports, but this would be. Specific to um a city board that you're the lead.
Um, let's see, I'm on the parks, Parks and Rec Commission. They had a meeting uh last week. Um, number of things came up there, a number of uh people interested in Candy Cane Park um for. Uh, there's a proposal to uh convert one of the um. Tennis courts to a pickleball court. Um, there's also a a person who wants to make a Gaga ball pit in in between the. The uh. The tennis courts in the in the new um. Playground. And if you don't know what Gaga ball is, look it up. It's it's an interesting thing that requires a pit be built. Um, with small walls around it. Um, there's also a group that uh is interested in doing community garden. Um, and the person that is spearheading that is um is out of the city at the moment and and should be coming back. Um, but part of the problem with that is there's no water in the in uh available in the park. And we had visited that as a as a council a year and a half, two years ago. Um, and that would be like ten thousand dollars to provide the water. Um, to that, so. Uh, my other committee is the commission is the sustainability commission. Um, this past meeting was uh. A little disstranded because the chair and uh two other members were were missing. So a lot of the conversation and discussion that was scheduled and on the agenda. Um, didn't really happen, so I'll give an update uh next month about that, so.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxen, I just realized when you put it all together, realize that you're on. Um, a board and two commissions, so that's got, that's three things that you have. Uh, responsibility for, what's the fourth one?
I'm also unofficially uh attending all of the non-motorized advisory committee meetings. It's a subcommittee of the um. Planning Commission.
Okay, would you like to relinquish one or?
No, it makes sense. The the pool and and the parks, you'd asked me about the parks because I was already on the Rutherford. Uh, pool. Doing that, and that's, that's really kind of unofficial. I mean, there's, it's not a a real commission or anything like that, but those make sense together. Um, and I think the, you know, no, it's fine. It gets a little busy sometimes, but but that's all right.
Just didn't wanna overwork you for, you know. For the allotment we get, you get, so, okay. No, as long as you're, as long as you're okay with it.
Yeah, no, it's fine. It's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Um, he, the uh last month, the planning commission meeting was pretty brief. Uh, they meet again tomorrow night, and so next council meeting, I'll have updates.
Okay. And liaison? Other than the commission, do you not have a liaison position?
Um, there's the uh HTC, but that hasn't met yet.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Simmons?
Yeah, hi, um, so uh Watts didn't meet this month. And um, nothing too dramatic in the historic uh district commission, so nothing related to share today.
Okay, so now are you and um Mr. Jones Chance both on HTC? Historic district?
That's interesting, maybe I am not.
Yeah, I'm HTC because you were um planning and zoning.
Oh, I thought you wanted zoning. Well, zoning definitely has a met because it sounds.
Okay.
Well, I didn't, I've attended some meetings, they've gotten news to me, but uh.
There you go. Well, I've gotten uh.
What I I did.
I'll get an email when they have a meeting, I'm sure.
Oh, okay. I mean, I can do zoning too if you if you want.
No, 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 I I mean, I'll get an email when zoning has a meeting. They they haven't, I don't think.
Okay.
Okay, so y'all got that one worked out?
For this week.
This week, okay.
I'll forget next week.
All right, uh, okay, um, Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes, um, the HRC actually unfortunately didn't have a quorum um for. Their last meeting, so um there was no business handled, but hopefully next month. We'll be able to meet and um go over what their um work that they would like to put forth for themselves as a group. Um, and how I can support them uh going forward and bringing recommendations back to council. Um, are we doing proposed business right now too or just the report?
Okay, it's boards and commissions.
That is all.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Somerville?
Yep, I have nothing to report for the Arts Commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, that's it for boards and commissions, I believe.
Uh, council, next item on the agenda is just the the standard liaison reports, uh, first one being Senco.
Um. I have nothing to report for Simco. The me, there's a meeting coming up on the twenty-ninth.
Okay, the next item was already touched on, Washina Area Transportation Studies, so I'll go to the next Urban County.
Um, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting that Mr. Myers attended.
Yeah, so uh the Urban County, they talked about the vaccine rollout, Washington County. As but as the Fair Housing um Alliance, um, and and the uh. Actually, they do. Um, and so it was, it was a lot of that and then going over to stay annual plans, so nothing. Uh, nothing huge except for the vaccination, which as you'll see, there's a lot more clinics being rolled out uh as we speak, so.
Right, that's a good thing. They're having lots of pop-up clinics now too, so, which makes it good. Thank you. Uh, the DDA. Uh, Mr. Jacobs?
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We had a meeting last week. Um, we passed quite a few pieces of business. Um, one of them was an event sponsorship for a film festival. Another was an event sponsorship for music on the street in downtown. One was for uh Depot Town Plaza Lighting. Um, we approved a landscaping contract, a new dumpster contract. Uh, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. And we've already heard from friends of Rutherford Pool. Okay, good. That brings us to council proposed business. I'm sorry, I turned away. I keep hearing all these doors closing. Car doors closing. Um, council proposed business, let's start with uh Ms. Somerville.
Sorry, I, yeah, I don't have anything. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, I came into the meeting, I didn't have anything, but um. What I do wanna say is that I think at the beginning of the first part of the meeting, I made a comment to the rest of council about. Just feeling really emotional right now with um the verdicts. Um, from the Dave Shaw, Derek Day, who was the Derek Shawman um trial today. And what I wanted to share and hopefully, you know, I won't take up too much time is just. The feeling that I had after and the reason that I had such big feelings around. The fear of coming into this and not knowing what the outcome would be, even though we had such blatant. Um, you know, evidence to show that George Floyd was brutally murdered, right? And so just reminding us all as we, you know, go into budget and we're working together as a group. And we're trying to figure out what to do to better serve our community and to, you know. Uh, just bridge these racial gaps and promote equity. Um, and remembering those feelings, like your, our our black and brown. Um, brothers and sisters feel in moments like this where you don't expect justice to be served. You don't expect accountability. Um, for for those who who wrong us and who murder us. for, for those who, who wrong us and who murder us, you know, for nothing, literally for nothing. And so I hope that we just keep in mind that this verdict and whatever happens from here is really just one of many situations that today we, you know, got the, they got it right, but we have a lot of work to do. And this is definitely a huge reminder for me in the work that I do day to day, as well as being a member of council that, you know, accountability is so important and it's our job to, to work towards creating spaces and opportunities for accountability. And for folks to know going into these really important roles, you will be held accountable for your actions and your behaviors towards others. And I'll just stop there, but just feeling really big, big feelings today with all of this.
Understandable. Thank you. Thank, and thank you for sharing that. Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim for, for sharing as well. Things to keep in mind as always. I think, I think my only issue, I just have some questions, I think maybe for Mr. Akers. Lately, there's been a lot of issues, at least in the neighborhood, with some, some of the utilities and the poor job they do when there's an issue. You know, like they tear up the street basically and, and coming and repairing it. I know we've got a few places around the neighborhood. There's one on Cornell where they came in, I think did some, I'm not sure if it was actually, well, allegedly, I think it was DTE, but, or it could have been YCUA. I'm not sure. Anyway. Do we ever, I don't know what kind of real leverage we have to try to get that, you know, get them to come back and kind of do these things. I'm going to guess not a lot. But, you know, I, I hear a lot about the complaints, you know, when they kind of leave a bad job behind and it takes them so long to get out there. So I don't know if you had any thoughts on that or just.
Well, so there's a couple of things that we do to make sure that the utility companies do a decent job on some of these repairs. We do, for non-emergency repairs, we do actually require them to pull right-of-way permits and pull bonds for a lot of the work that they do. Every company does a little bit different. YCUA, you know, they'll, they'll pull permits and they, they'll go through and they'll do all their permanent patches once a, a couple of times a year. With some of the utilities, as, as long as we're aware of it, we have had pretty good luck recently getting in contact with DTE and getting certain things taken care of. YCUA, specifically, I know in that neighborhood, there is an AT&amp;T manhole that was sinking. We actually, after, it wasn't the last council meeting, but it was the meeting before that, we were actually able to meet, get somebody from AT&amp;T out on site to take a look at it and assure that they were going to repair it. So as long as those complaints and those issues are forwarded to DPS, we're starting to be very proactive and making sure that we're getting them addressed. And, and at least the last couple that we've dealt with, we've had a lot of success and we've built some contacts. So if there's specific ones that, that get referred to council members, please feel free to share them with me. I'll, I'll make sure they get addressed.
Well, can I tell you about two right now? Or would you, I send you an email?
No, I, I can write them down right now if you're.
Well, the one I, I, it's on Cornell between College Wood and Kingwood Street. And so they took out a pretty good section of road and the person's lawn is, you know, kind of in disarray. It's pretty bad. So I've been, you know, kind of hearing about that one on some of the Facebook posts. And so I'm not sure what the situation is there, but it's, it's in not great shape. And so I'm hoping that they'll come and fix that soon, but maybe that's one just to keep an eye out on. So it's, it's, I, I think it's maybe in front of 1320 Kingwood is really the address. It's the house corner of Cornell and Kingwood. But I'm pretty sure I got that address right. So, but it's on Cornell.
All right.
And then the other one's actually, it's actually about near my house. It happens to be a gas leak that keeps happening. And so DTE has been out several times and they, each time they've done a horrible job with the concrete. So I have actually called them to come and repair and they're supposed to. But I think the thing I find so discouraging, like the, what they've done on Cambridge and, and also the Cornell is that, you know, it really tears up our street and they do a really horrible job of, of patching. And so, you know, we make a big investment. We've got, you know, we've paid a lot of money through millages and whatnot to, to, you know, keep our streets in good repair. And so it's, you know, to me disappointing when our utilities come and do repairs they need to do, but then they don't, you know, come back and do a good job. So I, I was, like I said, kind of curious as to what we as a city, you know, kind of do or leverage, you know, that we have and kind of trying to get them to, to do a good job when they to, to repair it. So that's like between College Wood and Kingwood on Cambridge, closer to College Wood. So it's, it's like the 800 block. There's only actually one house on the 800 block of Cambridge, 806, but it's, it's actually just north of that on the street. You know, there's two chunks that are been tearing out. And I'm, I'm sure that maybe another one's going to happen too, because there's still a gas leak there. But the job they did repairing the, the pavement is really, really horrible. And anyway, so, so if I hear about any other ones, I'll, I guess I'll let you know. But I appreciate, you know, that we do something, you know, to kind of have try to get them to do some of that stuff. So.
Council member Simmons, I, I'll make sure that I refer this complaint about the overall condition of the roads they're doing to some of their regional managers, although we have contact with, just so, you know, they know that it's, it's something that we're keeping our eye on as well. So I'll, I'll make sure that gets referred.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Like I said, I've seen other sections of road that get repaired and they do, they've done a great job in the past. It just seems like lately it's been really kind of shoddy. And like I said, you know, our roads are bad enough. We don't need to help it along by tearing them up and, and doing a junky job, you know, repairing them. So anyway, so yeah, I guess I'm just trying to protect our investment the best we can, even though, you know. So yeah, so thank you for that. And that's good to know. Then I can just kind of let you know if there seems to be an issue with other, some other locations. But yeah, those were the two. And I was going to say that yes, people were really happy that that got fixed on that, the one that, the, you know, manhole cover. But that finally got fixed and it was a nice repair. So yeah, people were really happy about that. It was noticed. So thank you so much for, for encouraging them to come and do the right thing with that. Appreciate it. That's, other than that, that's all I have right now. So thank you.
Okay. Ms. Simmons and Mr. Akers. Back when in 2003, when I think it was over a couple of years possibly, when we redid all of the local streets in the city, one of the things that we, that was done at that time, and Mr. Barr can help me with this if he would, the city gave notice to all of the utilities that if they did not, if they made a cut, if they did not repair it and bring it back up to, to good standard, then they would be, they would be charged for it. So I don't know that there was any time limit on that. So if utilities are making cuts and sometimes I, I've seen the same thing this, where they don't do a good job repairing and it, it becomes a real, almost becomes a hazard sometimes in the street. So I think that we may, maybe need to go back to that and hold the, definitely hold the utilities accountable and have them come back and fix it. So, but Mr. Akers, I'm sure you could check with, with Mr. Barr on that. Because that was something that council actually voted on. So.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm bringing that up too, because that's kind of how I feel. And I could see where previous repairs have been done in other parts of the street. Did a really nice job, you know, putting the new patch in, sealing, you know, the, where the parts meet with the, with the hot tar, you know, so that there's not the, like open joint. But yeah, these two places, the two places I just mentioned, they're, they are, I think a hazard. And they just did such a horrible job. And it's just going to keep, it's going to tear up our road and just ruin it in those sections if they don't fix that. And I understand if they still have something to come back and do, but I know also if you let these things linger, it kind of goes down on their priority list and so, but, but yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Mr. Barr, could you, I see you. Good evening. Did you, were you, wow, can you help me with that?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Good evening. You are correct. There is a city ordinance on repair of cuts in the pavement. And when, when the city council and the voters voted, I think maybe 15 years ago now, to resurface all of the city streets, that is the local streets. They also did a lot of infrastructure work for gas and water underneath them. But of course, things happen and sometimes the utilities do have to cut the streets. But I've been in touch with Mr. Akers on, there's a bond requirement and there is an ordinance on repair. So Mr. Akers is on, on it, but he has to be notified of it. But if he is notified, I'm sure something will be done.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Well, Ms. Simmons notifying, and I'm sure that there are other cuts in places that, around the city that also need to more repair. Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, I just, I, I want to second everything Ms. Brown said. And also everything Mr. Mr. Foley said in the public comment. I have, so a few of us are, you know, scheduling a time to get together for a a small work group on the violence issue to see what, if anything, we can do about it. Back in August or September, I started working with Mr. Barr a little bit on some of the liquor licenses and problematic gas stations. And public complaints kind of dried up. So I, I guess I'll be looking for some police reports on those again, coming up. In other news, a few of us, Mr. Wilcox and Ms. Somerville got together for another small working group focused on affordable housing. And hopefully we'll have another meeting this week and we can kind of help move that issue forward. I did have a question for Mr. Akers about the ruts in Rec Park. I haven't been out there in a few days, but the last time I was, they are quite deep. You can, you can stand in them. And I know they were going to be patched after the, after the rain. I just wondered where we, where we are on that. And then you mentioned last time that the trucks would use the path to drive, but the gravel path and maybe some of it's buried and under grass or something is about as wide as my pen. And I don't know if that will hold a truck. So I'm just wondering what, what we do because there are kids playing football and I can just see someone getting hurt.
Our, our original plan was to wait until after some of the wet weather of the spring got past us in order to fill those, those holes in just because that, that's, you know, because we wanted to make sure that the holes stay, they don't get too muddy, the, you know, everything stays level and grass gets established. I can have a chat with our foreman to see if we can accelerate the timeframe. Because I, especially if there's kids using that area. Or at least, you know, put it in there and then recheck it after the dry period. So we don't have deeper rot. So I will talk to our staff tomorrow and see if I can get that portion addressed. And then regarding the, the perimeter track, there is grass that grows around there. It is my understanding, based on some of the conversations with my staff, that there is actually a gravel base that is under the grass. And the gravel base should be strong enough to support our, our vehicles. We're currently looking at an alternative location for that trash can that would be easier to access off Woods Drive. Just to try to keep our trucks off of it as much as possible. But, but yeah, so, so we are, we are addressing some of those concerns and I'll talk to my staff tomorrow about making sure that we at least put some dirt in those ruts. If temporarily, just so, you know, we don't have any twisted ankles or people getting hurt.
All right. Thanks. That is all that I have.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since Ron's here, I give him kudos for putting straw down in the bare dirt around the, the play structure in Candy Cane Park that was getting pretty muddy this spring. And now there's fresh straw out there to to keep that dry. So thanks for that. I did have a question about, there's a sinkhole. Sorry, Ron. I mean, it's just like infrastructure night for you. The sinkhole at 1820 Whittier, I'm just looking for an update on what's happened with that.
The, is that, is that the?
It's behind the dentist office. It's, there's a dentist office at 1820 Washington. This is the back end of that building.
Yeah, it, it was my understanding that, that the planning department is in talks with the private property owner to address that issue. There's a structure over there. I don't know what the status of it is right now, but I'll follow up and make sure that whatever precautions need to be taken are taken on the public right-of-way end.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, because that sinkhole originates and under their parking lot and is now collapsed the sidewalk out. So I wasn't, wasn't sure if they were responsible for the sidewalk part of that, between the sidewalk and the street. Or just for, you know, their parking lot.
Will they, if, if, if it is their structure that's causing the sidewalk to collapse, they will ultimately be responsible for repairing it. But you, you know, in the meantime, if there is a, I guess a hazard, you know, our staff will go out there and, and make sure that it's at least blocked off.
Okay. I forgot what the other thing was. I guess that's it. Double blanked out here.
You'll think of it two o'clock in the morning.
Or two minutes from now.
Yeah. Well, if it's two minutes from now, you can raise your hand.
All right. I'll let you know.
All right. Good. Okay. Yes, it's time for communication from the mayor and I too certainly concur with the expressions from Mayor Pro Tim and from Mr. Jones Chance and just jotted down a few things that I just want to share. And we did see justice began today with the verdict for Mr. Floyd. And it's just the beginning of justice. And I quote, I heard Professor Eddie Glaub say this, and I, it just hit me that justice is a practice, not an end. And that just because we got an semblance of justice today, we have to continue to work at it. And we must continue to do individually. It's back to us individually. The only way that we're going to really see an end to the systemic racism and the systemic injustices and the systemic, those things that caused the murdering of young black men, old black men, in-between-aged black men and black women, is that there becomes a real change in this country. And the only way that change is going to happen is it comes back to us as individually. We've got to individually, again, do that introspection that we talked about before. And whatever is in us, be willing to face it and be willing to bring it up and make a change. I, in listening to the news today, I, when the verdict came in and one of the newscasters interviewed this seemingly fairly young, I mean, probably in his 30s or 40s, white man that was standing there and he interviewed him and the man said, he's asking why I was there. He said, I'm, I'm here because he said, I've, there's been a change in me. He said, when the murder first happened, he said, something happened inside of me. he said, something happened inside of me. He said, it caused me to really truly see myself and to see the white privilege that, and the privilege that I have been operating out under. And he said, I began to see what black people and black men really go through. And he said, once I began to see it, I knew that I had to change. And that was what he, those were his words. And he said, and so the newscaster asked him, well, what are you going to do to change? And he said, I don't, to change things. He said, I don't know. He said, but I, today I actually Googled. He said, I went to the, uh, Black Lives Matter website and asked, what can a white man do to help make things better for black people in this country? And we've got to look at it individually and say, I'm not going to be a part of the problem. I'm going to be a part of the solution. I'm going to change. It's so many little things that we can, we can make, we can make a change. And that's the only way justice is truly going to prevail. Liberty and justice for all is only going to be all as we do it one by one. And we begin to come together collectively. Again, when we see something, say it. Don't just let it go by. But as we begin to work together, we're going to see a systemic change. And we can begin to change by encouraging right now. If we all just begin to reach out, we know where our rep, our congressional representative and, uh, senators are on the floor. George Floyd, um, Justice in Policing Act of two thousand and twenty is sitting there. And it needs to be acted upon. It needs to be voted so that there can be, again, we can begin to see some systemic changes at the federal level in policing. It breaks my heart that since the Derek Chauvin trial started, and what was, what's it been, six weeks? Maybe a little more than that or a little less than that. There have been sixty-five black people killed by police in just those few weeks. There have been, these were not all black, but it's still got to be changed. There have been over seven mass shootings with the one when just yesterday or today, probably eight mass shootings in the last month. Something's got to change, people. And it's only going to change when change begins with me. When I begin and I'm willing to make whatever changes need to be done in me. And then I began to speak up and to move forth and to show up. I've asked, um, Clokealinga, talked, we talked last week and we're going to be getting together. I've asked for a resolution. I'm going to bring a resolution on March fourth, asking that we declare gun violence a public health crisis here in the city of Ypsilanti. We had two homicides within a week. And that's all we know about them, is that there were two homicides. I have people calling me and calling me and texting me and emailing me, what about the homicide? What, what's, there's no, we have, we haven't gotten any more information other than there were two homicides. I know the police are working and it's, I'm not just dumping it all on them, but we have to have information to give people. People want information. And if we have them, we need to call upon our residents, our constituents to join us in this whole move to try to stop the violence and to stop the, to bring a change to the systemic racism that we all face. And there's still racism in Ypsilanti. We can't get away from it. We might like to think that we're all that and a bag of chips as far as racism or diversity is, but people, it's just not so. And we, it's up to us. They, people elected us to be the leaders. Let's, let's begin to, not that I have all the answers. I don't even know where we can start, other than starting with ourselves. But let's begin to work on it. Let's recognize that it's there. And once we recognize, let's admit that it's there and say, we've got work to do. And not just a little bit, we got a lot of work to do. And I'm going to stop there. Stop there. Let's go on the agenda, Mr. Alanga.
Uh, council, the next item on the agenda is communications from the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and also Mr. Jones Chance and the mayor for the comments. Um, I'm kind of, um, I'm under the weather a little bit, but also I am, um, you know, a little disturbed as well about the conditions in the nation today. Um, we must keep pressing forward. And so as the city manager, I'm committed to pressing forward and to looking for solutions for our own city. I realize we have to start locally and there's a lot of work to be done. Um, I will be getting with the chief to have a discussion, um, regarding the two homicides. I didn't have much information myself. So we have, we have to come up with a better communication system, I believe, uh, and a more timely one, because we've asked this question time and time again. I'm looking forward to having our communications, um, director on board as well. Um, the only communications I have tonight is just to remind council of the upcoming budget sessions, which will begin at our next meeting. Um, I trust, um, that everyone has, um, the last budget presentation you can go over and that you'll start to go over, um, the numbers as you get them, your next packet. Um, I, one thing I would ask is that if you have any questions, if you could please, um, send them to me early, if you could, in advance, after you look, um, at items, so that I could give them to the proper, um, department head and we can have an answer for you, um, and not have to say, oh, we'll come back to the next meeting. Uh, we only get two meetings unless we extend and we go past the charter requirement to have the budget approved. I'd like to answer all of your questions. So if you have some, if we get them in advance, we will know, um, the answers and we can give you a more complete answer. Um, that's all that I have, uh, for tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Hmm, thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
The next item on the agenda is communications. And as the city manager said, um, May fourth and May eighteenth are budget sessions. Um, and that's all for communication. Uh, the next item is adjournment.
Okay, um, before we adjourn, I just want to give, if anyone has anything that they would like to, comments or anything that they want to say before the, before we adjourned. Okay. All right, seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Stay safe, stay well, and.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.